For joining us and a really big thank you. We have many members of different Beverly Girl Scout troops who are here with us this evening. Thank you all so much for being here with us. It's a real pleasure to have you. I know you're here because we have a really special guest who's going to be receiving a proclamation when we start this meeting. I won't give away the rest of that yet, but thank you for being here. That's such a special occasion and even more special because we have all of you here. So, thank you. So, this evening, we do have a proclamation in honor of Priscilla Douglas, who is here with us this evening. We'll say more about that when we come to it right at the beginning. We have a 7:30 public hearing with National Grid. We do have one resident speaker who signed up to speak, and then we have some routine business that we'll take care of, take a break for some subcommittee work, and we'll be back to finish it all up. And I do note that we have His Honor Mayor Cahill is here with us also. Thank you, Mayor Cahill, for being with us. I know you're going to join us for the proclamation. Thanks for joining us this evening. So, with that, I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, November 10th, 2025, 7 o'clock PM. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Crowley.
Here.
Feldman.
Here.
Housman.
Here.
Rotundo.
Yeah.
Spang.
Here.
St. Hilaire.
Here.
Sweeney.
Here.
And Flowers.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counselor Sweeney, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you all. We sounded much better with all of your voices here. Thank you. I do want to also just mention and congratulate Counselor-elect John Mulady, who is here with us this evening. Counselor-elect Mulady was sworn in, so actually is officially on his way to being Counselor Mulady, sworn in by Ms. Kent today. Folks who've been following along with the council may remember that State Rep Hannah Bowen resigned as of October 30th from the City Council so that she could step fully into the state rep role. Her doing that, under our city charter, meant that the highest vote getter in the at-large race not currently on the council could be sworn in and start at the end of this term. That is Mr. Mulady. Counselor Mulady, it's a pleasure to have you. We look forward to having you in this seat next week. And the reason that we're sort of in between here is there's just some HR and new hire paperwork that's still getting worked out, but we're so happy to have you and congratulations. We look forward to having you up here. Mr. Mayor, are you set? Shall we go to the podium and do the proclamation? So, we will begin, as I mentioned, with this special proclamation. This is Order 246, a proclamation for Priscilla Douglas.
I haven't signed it on my board. Okay, now. You starting or I starting?
You start.
Okay. Hey, everybody. So good to be here. Priscilla Douglas, we're very excited to honor you and glad that the Scouts could be here to join in. Whereas Priscilla Douglas, a longtime resident of Beverly, has made a profound and lasting impact on the community through her lifetime of service, mentorship, and leadership, embodying the values of the Girl Scout law in both word and action, and...
Whereas Priscilla first joined the Girl Scouts in 1947 as a Brownie in Gardner, Massachusetts, following in the footsteps of her mother, one of the organization's earliest members. As a teenager, Priscilla earned the Curved Bar, the highest Girl Scout honor of her time, and represented the United States as one of four delegates at an international leadership program at R. Chalet in Switzerland, the first world center for the World Association of Girl Guides and Girl Scouts, and...
Whereas, following her graduation from Wellesley College, Priscilla carried her passion for empowering others into her professional and volunteer life, serving as a field representative for the Girl Scouts of the Philadelphia Council before moving to Beverly in 1973 with her husband Neeland. Here, she led Girl Scout troops for her three daughters and countless other girls for nearly two decades, nurturing confidence, leadership, and a lifelong love of community among Beverly's youth, and...
Whereas, in addition to her many roles within scouting, Priscilla strengthened the organization and the community through initiatives such as organizing safety trainings, leading early recycling efforts, serving on Gold Award review committees, supporting camp property planning, chairing fundraising campaigns, and mentoring new leaders, and...
Whereas, her dedication to service extended well beyond scouting, enriching Beverly through her volunteer work with the YMCA, Harbor Light Homes, the League of Women Voters, and the Beverly Female Charitable Society, and through her service on the Beverly School Committee where she stepped up to fill a vacancy and support local education during the 1970s, and...
Whereas, earlier this year, in recognition of her extraordinary lifetime of service, Priscilla Douglas was honored by the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts with a Lifetime of Service Award, celebrating her unwavering commitment to empowering girls and strengthening the community.
Now, therefore, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Beverly, on this 10th day of November, 2025, it is our distinct honor to recognize Priscilla Douglas for her decades of wonderfully impactful service and leadership in our community. In honor of this occasion, I, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor, and...
I, City Council President Julie R. Flowers. All right. Together with our esteemed colleagues on the Beverly City Council, declare November 10th, 2025, as Priscilla Douglas Day in the city of Beverly. Congratulations. Priscilla. That is the proclamation in honor of Priscilla Douglas that was just read aloud.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
That carries unanimously eight zero, and that is approved. Congratulations, Priscilla. We appreciate all of the lifetime of work and service, as we just heard some of, and certainly that proclamation captures some of it, but those of us in Beverly who know Priscilla know that that only captured the tip of the iceberg of the kinds of service and dedication that both you and Neeland have shown for our community. So, thank you, and it's an honor to have you here, and what an honor to have so many of the Beverly Girl Scouts here with us as well. So, I would entertain a motion, Counselors, to take a five-minute recess so that we can do some pictures if folks would like. You have a chance to congratulate Ms. Douglas, and then at the end of the recess, you are all welcome to stay with us as long as you would like throughout the meeting, but if you would like to be able to leave, you also are welcome to do so, either during the recess or any point after. I know that maybe spending the whole night with us isn't what everybody would love to do, but you are welcome to stay as long as you want. So, Counselors, I'd entertain a motion. I'm actually going to change it to a 10-minute recess.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
That carries eight zero. We'll be back. So, I'll call the full council back to order, and once again, just I will offer a word of congratulations on behalf of the council, on behalf of our city, to Priscilla Douglas on that Lifetime Achievement Award for her work in Girl Scouting, but really also her work in and for our community. And a thank you again to all the girls from the different Girl Scout troops who joined us. It's always really special to have folks from the community join us here in council chambers, and I think especially exciting when we get to have some of the young people from our community be here and bring their energy and bring their enthusiasm. And so, what a gift it was to have the different Girl Scouts here helping us to honor Priscilla. So, congratulations again to Priscilla Douglas. We do have, as I mentioned, one resident speaker signed up for a three-minute speaker spot. Vice President Crowley, I see you getting the timer ready. I'll invite Mr. Taylor to the podium, and as he's coming to the podium, I will just mention, as I like to do so that people following along can understand, these are spots that are available at any of our regular meetings. There are five resident speaker spots available for three minutes each, and they can be signed up for by contacting the city clerk's office no later than 9:30 the morning of the meeting. They are first come, first served, and they are not a time where you'll see the council engage back and forth with the speakers. It's not a time for questions and answers or comment, but it doesn't mean that we're not listening and we're not taking it seriously, and we very much value having folks come and speak with us. So, Mr. Taylor, if you'll begin with your name and address for the record, and when you see the timer run out of time, if you would just draw your remarks to a close.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Council President. My name is John Taylor. I live at 41 Cole Street. I am a resident here of Beverly, and that is my commentary. I did want to thank all of you for serving our city, and I think we need to recognize that, and I speak to you from a position of grace and assuming grace. But I did want to address money in local politics. As both Bernie Sanders on the left and Susan Collins on the right have said, money in politics breeds corruption. In our recent local election, we had two super PACs enter the race, spending upwards of $7,000 in Beverly political races. They were liberal and conservative super PACs, so all ideologies were represented. Many of you on the council benefited from their expenditures. Forty-eight hours after the election, one of the big super PACs gleefully emailed their undisclosed members to announce their involvement in Beverly's own race and the results. Now comes a time of choosing for you. As the budget season proceeds, and you select a budget analyst who may speak truth to your power, you can follow the agenda of the super PACs who funded you in part and ignore Beverly voters, or you can focus on the needs and wants of the 45,000 Beverly residents. This season, I congratulate Counselors St. Hilaire, Feldman, Housman, Crowley, and Rotundo for not benefiting from PAC money. For the rest, I hope you will vote for Beverly residents and not for the super PAC which spent money on your race. And please, let's stop encouraging these super PACs from coming into these races, because it has happened before. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Thanks for being here with us this evening. Before we get to our 7:30 posted hearing, we have a few minutes, so we'll go to some routine business, and we'll begin with acceptance of minutes of previous meetings. We have one set of meeting minutes that we can approve, and that is from our special City Council meeting, June 18th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
Move.
All those in favor.
Aye.
That carries eight zero. Let's go to communications from His Honor, the mayor, please, Ms. Kent.
Order number 247, a grant for $60,000 from the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism Destination Development Capital Program to fund updates at Independence Park.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order 248, a gift to the Beverly Public Library in the amount of $1,750 from the University of Massachusetts Lowell Digital Equity Partnership to help improve digital access for residents of Beverly.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 249, a $1,704, 544 FY25 State Formula Grant from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs to support operations at the Council on Aging.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 250, a lease transaction with Pitney Bowes for the city's mail machine contract.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 251, a reappointment for James Butler to serve as Director of Municipal Inspections.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 252, a gift of $100 from Renee Hogan to be used to purchase books from the Farms Branch Library in memory of Ron Pruitt and Elizabeth Hogan.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. Let's go to communications from other city officers and boards, please.
Order number 253, from the city clerk, a new allocation for a taxi delivery license for Boston-Ach Limbo Services at 2316 Broton Drive.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 254, from Francis Golden, Chief Assessor, a request to schedule a public hearing on December 1st, 2025, relative to the allegation of fiscal year 2026 tax levy.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property to set a public hearing.
Order number 255, Counsel Rotundo, on behalf of Bruce Doig, Director of Recreation, naming of the Beverly Recreation Office Building in honor of Gail Jean Carmody.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs, and I'll just note that we also received today a letter from Mr. Doig, Parks and Recreation Community Services Director, to be attached to that order. Thank you. Let's go to communications, applications, and petitions, please.
Order number 256, from the Salem and Beverly Water Supply Board, per Chapter 700 of the Mass Acts of 1913, a letter regarding the determination of the volume of water supplied to Salem and Beverly during three years prior to September 30th, 2025.
Counselors, I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
Move.
All those in favor.
Aye.
That carries eight zero. Thank you. We do have some unfinished business from our previous meeting. This is Order 163. We'll continue to hold that should the mayor wish to take further action on it before the end of this term. And I would entertain a motion just to take a two-minute recess. All those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Take a two-minute recess. Take a two-minute recess. Thank you very much, everyone. Call the full council back to order following that recess. Just a little bit of an administrative recess. So the posted public hearing for 7:30 PM on Order 233, which was National Grid Petition 31113315, has been withdrawn by the petitioner. The work that's being done is in a private way portion of the street, and so actually does not require a grant of location from the council. So the National Grid rep who is here with us was confirming that that was the case. And having confirmed that was the case, and consulting with our Assistant City Solicitor, Jesse Dole, thank you for being here, Mr. Dole, they've decided to withdraw the petition. So with that, I would entertain a motion then for us to do some subcommittee work. And so I'll take a motion to take a recess for some subcommittee work, a break actually, not a recess, for some subcommittee work, and then we'll come back.
Public services does not have to meet.
And public services, folks, you can choose where you want to go. But I would entertain that motion, take a brief break for some subcommittee work. All those in favor? All right, so that's eight zero. We will have Finance and Property stay here in chambers, Legal Affairs in the committee room, please, and Public Services, you can choose your own adventure.
Call to order, the Committee on Finance improperly, and call to order, Committee of the whole. Good evening, everybody. We've got a few orders tonight that were referred to us from the regular council meeting. We'll take up Order 247. This is a $60,000 grant from the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism Destination Development Capital Program to fund updates on Independence Park, part of the Beverly 400 preparations, I believe. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Nope? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve Order 247.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Order 248. This is a gift to the Beverly Public Library for $1,750 from the University of Massachusetts Lowell Digital Equity Partnership to help improve digital access for residents of Beverly. So this seems like a good win. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept this gift.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, Order 249. So this is a grant of $174,544, FY25 State Formula Grant from the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs to support operations at the Council on Aging. Questions, comments, colleagues? This is a formula from the states based on 10,909 senior citizens aged 60 and over that live in Beverly, according to the last census. So that's how this is formulated. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Three to zero. Okay, next stop is Order 252. This is a $100 gift from Renee Kogan to be used to purchase books for the Beverly Farms Branch Library in memory of Ron Pruitt and Elizabeth Hogan. I would entertain a motion to approve this gift.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to Ms. Kogan for that. Okay. Lastly, Order 254. This is a communication from our city assessor, Frank Golden, with a request to set a public hearing. It's that time of year that we set the fiscal year FY26 tax levy. I'm sorry, 2026 tax levy. So I would entertain a motion that we set a public hearing at our next meeting, I'm sorry, at the December 1st meeting at 7:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is set. Okay. That's all we have on our agenda, colleagues. Any comments?
No.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Whole.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would also entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee on Finance and Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the subcommittees for their work during that break. And I'll call the full council back to order. We'll go to reports from subcommittees. Ms. Kent.
Order number 162, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a N192 replacement project, Citizens Advisory Committee update, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Receive and place on file.
Councillors, I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file as recommended by the subcommittee.
Two minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries eight zero. Thank you.
Order number 247, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a $60,000 grant from the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism Destination Development Capital Program, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carries eight zero.
Order number 248, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a gift to the Beverly Public Library in the amount of $1,750 from the University of Mass Lowell Digital Equity Partnership to help improve digital access for residents of Beverly, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carries eight zero.
Order number 249, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a grant for $174,544. It's a FY25 State Formula Grant from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs to support operations of the Council on Aging, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries eight zero.
Order 252, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a $100 gift received from Renee Hogan to be used to purchase books for the Farms Branch Library in memory of Ron Pruitt and Elizabeth Hogan, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries eight zero, and our thanks to Renee Hogan for that gift in memory of family.
Order number 254, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a request to schedule a public hearing on December 1st, 2025, relative to the allegation of fiscal year 2026 tax levy, have considered said matter, and they set a public hearing on December 1st at 7:30 PM.
I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee for our December 1st meeting at 7:30 PM.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries eight zero, so we will have that public hearing to discuss and allocate the FY26 tax levy on December 1st, 7:30.
Order number 250, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a lease transaction with Pitney Bowes for the city's mail machine contract, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries eight zero.
Order number 253, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a new application for a taxi delivery license for Boston-Ach Limo services at 2316 Broton Drive, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries eight zero.
Order number 255, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding Council Rotundo's letter on behalf of Bruce Doig, Director of Recreation, naming of the Beverly Recreation Office Building in honor of Gail Jean Carmody, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Set a public hearing for December 15th at 7:30 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Council Rotundo, before we take a motion to set that public hearing, this was your order. Anything that you would like to say about it at this point?
No.
If you can unmute yourself, I guess that is.
Here you go. It's pretty much stated in the letter that it was submitted, and just the letter is, you know, being supported unanimously by the Recreation Commission as well. So hopefully, this is a well-deserved recognition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. So I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing on this order as recommended by the subcommittee for December 15th at 7:30 PM.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries eight zero. That's all the reports. All right. Councillors, are there any reminders or announcements from members of the council? Council Feldman?
Yes, thank you. I would like to remind everyone that our first financial forecasting meeting is coming up this Thursday at 6:00 PM, and it will be here in council chambers. And this year, it is going to also be on BevCam, so you can follow along from home. And I would encourage anyone that's had budget questions in the past or has heard me harping on the importance of the financial forecast and its report that we end up filing in December to please watch, follow along, and feel free to reach out with questions. It is not a public hearing, so there won't be opportunity for open discussion, but you will be able to help, it'll help people understand the process of the financial forecast and its importance for our city's budget. So, join us.
Thank you very much, Council Feldman, and thanks for your work chairing that committee as well. Are there other reminders or announcements? Council Crowley?
Sure, just some reminders for tomorrow for some of the Veterans Day ceremonies and things and plans are going on. There's going to start at Beverly Farms ceremony up on West Street, 9:00 AM, across from the fire department. And there will be a ceremony at the hospital at the memorial at 10:00 AM. And then the primary ceremony is going to be downtown at the Vietnam Veteran Memorial starting at 10:50. Please come join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Any other announcements or reminders from councillors? All right. Well, thank you very much, everyone. A big congratulations again to Priscilla Douglas on her Lifetime Achievement Award on having today be named Priscilla Douglas Day in the city of Beverly. Thanks to Mayor Cahill for joining us to do that proclamation together. It was an honor to have Priscilla here. And thanks again to the Girl Scouts and their troop leaders who were here with us, as well as, I noticed, some former troop leaders from the city of Beverly who have been a big part of city of Beverly Girl Scouting as well. So it was a joy to have them. Thank you very much to our Assistant City Solicitor, Jesse Dole, for being here as well. Thank you very much to our Assistant City Solicitor, Jesse Dole, for being here as well. Incoming councillor, Milady, it was a pleasure to have you. We look forward to having you up here with us at our next meeting. And our thanks to our city clerk, Assistant City Clerk, and your entire team bringing us through election season. We know that's a lot of work, and your office has always handled things smoothly and efficiently. And I know it's a lot that you've been doing, and so we thank you for that. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? That's eight zero, and our thanks to Kim in the BevCam booth. Thanks to everyone for joining us. We are adjourned. Good night. Thanks, everyone.